So your name, where did you draw the...
Yes.
I can't decide, no. I saw the picture in the papers.
The principals are...
Two minutes.
The principals are in the...
Oh, good. Just like two minutes before I got here, he has this picture of everybody on my...
Who are they?
We'll make them all come in August and we'll leave.
She got changed for her...
See, why haven't you no problem with that name, texter?
How was that posterior to that?
This one again.
Where'd you do that at? Ask her. Where did you do your... Where'd you do this?
Ball, ball, ball.
She wants to talk to us.
That wasn't...
Mr. Dalton's side.
July here. Dr. Gibson.
I've never heard of him.
I love it.
At 275. If we had a 3511, somebody could grab us out of tax due to...
Before the law was seen as things, they can't really complain about that.
You agree? Do you agree that you decided to do that this month?
She's not asking in front of everyone. She don't want to ask you in front of everyone.
She was our classmate.
We really wanted to be on time every afternoon.
She was...
She was really without me.
Anyone you wanted.
What was that?
He had my chip.
So just how early did you arrive to get that?
No, it wasn't too late. No, that's fine. Somebody showed up two minutes after she was...
I thought you were off at 6:00 AM or something. Yeah.
Just want to make sure. I want to make sure you have sound. I'll go about that. Did you check sound?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, let's be clear. I tried it earlier, too.
Just wanted to ensure it's working. Refuse me to sabotage. Go for it now. Get worried.
Okay, we got everybody? Any other questions about the tax rate that I can answer before we close this meeting? Can I vote to close the meeting? We're going to send a vote to set our tax rate at 275%. It's bringing dollars to the situation.
I need a motion to set our tax rate at 275. Mark makes the motion on a second. Michael seconds. Any other discussion? We need to do a roll call vote on this.
Here, yes.
Yes.
Here, yeah. Oh, yes. Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ken?
Dan? Myself, yes. Here is a seven. I need a motion to adjourn the tax rate meeting. Mark makes a motion. Deena seconds. All in favor. Here is a seven out. Thank you. Start back up in a couple minutes.
See what happens when you sit on the front row and stop standing.
Yeah. Definitely.
Oh, this stuff here is awesome. It's amazing.
The surgery center was at...
I don't know that I can get that one.
Some of them have already called and got internships.
Really? Oh, that's awesome.
They told them about like the two-year vet tech program. We just had a vet living where some lady stood there. She just was asking where her college, she's teaching at a college in Kansas, that just started a two-year vet program. So she has sent information to them and she was just there with her kids.
School? So how far away is this? You said the kids got internships.
It's about six, ten hours. But they can go like over the summer, like a three-week internship or over the summer. Sorry, we do two weeks. Just go and work every day.
And this was at the surgery center?
That was at Mendocino. It's one of the biggest horse surgery clinics.
You have the pictures that you guys posted of that. I was like, oh, wow. I was like, oh, everything's big. Oh, yeah, Deena, it's horses.
High-tech.
Oh, very high-tech. It's, it looked very...
And the kids were good helping each other.
Well, they were probably having a great time.
Oh, we was, we were up there going at 6:00, 4:00, 5:00. Old days, but they were exhausted.
All right, we'll go ahead and...
Yeah, hopefully several are going to speak next week. Get the...
We'll start with the pledge allegiance by two representatives of the House.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we approve the consent agenda, I would like to add one discussion action item and then do it under me and if everything else can slide down, that's just the special education compliance plan. We'll approve the special education one. Mrs. Swafford will speak to us when we get to that.
So I need an approval of the consent agenda. Those items will include the June 20th, July 3rd, and July 25th, August 5th, August 9th, regular three minutes. The approval of the financial summary, fund balance, balances, authorization for paying the bills, approval of substitute teacher listing, and approval of the proposed agenda and as a matter of motion. Randy makes a motion on a second. Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a seven out. Next, we'll do our MSBA monthly report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report for the month of August. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the 2019 Safe Schools and Colleges Conference held last month in Springfield. One of the speakers at the event was Special Advisor to the Federal Commission on School Safety, Tom Wheeler. He said the report from that commission emphasized mental health support for students as a key to keeping our schools as safe and secure as possible.
I think what you see in the report is discusses using Medicaid money to fund school counselors. All right, and Secretary Azar was very clear that they're going to make big steps to allow that, more so from funding. It was very clear that the integration of health services between providers and schools, law enforcement, the communication of that information is going to take place.
Another featured speaker at the conference was national school safety expert Susan Payne, the founder of the Safe to Tell Prevention Framework. She said the code of silence amongst students and adults is a major barrier to school leaders and law enforcement in efforts to prevent tragedies.
We know from a research perspective that through the code of silence, our communities can become very dangerous. If we don't get people to speak up about concerns that are happening in the community, we as law enforcement can't respond. We can't prevent, we can't intervene early, we can't solve cases. It's been an issue, it's not new, but it does impact us in schools today and with social media.
She also emphasized the importance of culture and climate in providing a safe learning environment for students. The Safe Schools and Colleges Conference is an annual event sponsored by the Missouri School Boards Association's Center for Education Safety, the only statewide school safety organization in Missouri. The event featured numerous concurrent sessions on school safety issues and brought together school leaders, law enforcement officials, mental health providers, and many others. As of August 1st, more than 90,000 children in Missouri have lost their health insurance coverage through Moh Health Net, Missouri's Medicaid program. In some cases, that happened because applications for the renewal of coverage were sent to the wrong addresses. Many families are not even aware their coverage has been terminated. Molly Tinknor is the executive director of the Show Me School-Based Health Alliance, and she says the situation matters a lot to schools.
So we do know that schools utilize Medicaid for a lot of different resources, specifically provide healthcare services, potentially child well visits, as well as flu vaccinations or the vaccinations required to have your child enrolled in school, as well as we know that a lot of services that are provided specifically to our special ed children are Medicaid billable. So Medicaid revenue is really big for our school districts in order to help support our students.
She adds there are some things schools can do to help parents reinstate dropped coverage or to get initial coverage.
One is to review your, the school nurses are reviewing the list of all their students that have chronic health conditions, because those are our kind of immediate kids that we know are going to be accessing healthcare services. So we're reviewing that list, looking online on the Department of Social Services website to see if the student has healthcare. That's something that anyone can do. I can go on that website and type in the child's name or their date of birth, and I can find out, do they have current coverage? And then I can help the families navigate getting their service, getting their Medicaid back if they are dropped.
Tinknor adds it's critical that schools help my families aware of the issue of dropped Medicaid coverage as soon as possible. The Department of Social Services has staff available to attend back-to-school events and to assist families in your school district. For more information on this Medicaid coverage crisis, you can also contact the Show Me School-Based Health Alliance at 800-807-8494. Governor Carson has signed into law House Bill 604, a bill containing numerous provisions related to K-12 education, including one that requires newly elected or appointed school board members who are trained to, after August 28th, to receive 18 and 1/2 hours of training, an increase of 2 and 1/2 hours from the previous requirement. The additional time must focus on identifying signs of sexual abuse in children and the danger signals of potentially abusive relationships between children and adults. Beginning next month, the MSBA will provide the additional 2 and 1/2 hours of CVM essential training for new board members. In addition, all school board members must receive one hour of refresher training on an annual basis once the initial training is completed. That training will include concepts not in the initial training, including the prevention of sexual abuse of children. The MSBA will offer various opportunities to meet this requirement that will include online training, a classroom session in conjunction with the MSBA Annual Conference in September, and others throughout the year. Details will be provided in upcoming MSBA communications. By the way, registration is now open for the 2019 MSBA Annual Conference, to be held September 26th through the 29th at the Lake of the Ozarks. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. Also, be sure your school board is represented at the MSBA Fall Delegate Assembly, to be held on Friday, September 27th during the annual conference. This delegate assembly will be considering approval of MSBA's advocacy positions document that will form the basis of MSBA's lobbying efforts during the 2020 section of the Missouri General Assembly. Delegates do not have to be registered for the annual conference in order to participate in the delegate assembly, and if your board's designated delegate cannot attend, you can send another board member to represent your board at this important meeting. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at the board meeting. Have a great beginning to your school year, and so long from Columbia.
Next, we'll do our AKA Board Spotlight.
Mr. Dalton. All right. Leah asked, are teachers new to the district to join us this evening? I don't think they were all able to make it, but we have several of them that were able to be here tonight. They have already put in a ton of work getting ready for the school year, do some extra in-service days before the rest of the staff comes back. We do want to recognize them. We're excited about having them with us. We're going to let our building administrators introduce them this evening.
So put on high school. Tonight, I have Mr. John Brandt, who is here. He is in our admin department. Ms. Angela McKay, who is our new JAG supervisor, Jobs for American graduates. Mrs. Chelsea Maggert, Family Consumer Sciences. Coach Damon Seager, he is in the PE department and also head boys' basketball coach. And Mr. James Thorne, ISS supervisor. In addition, we still have Mrs. Abby Fair, who is our Learning Lab Supervisor. Mrs. Kelly Williams in the math department. And Mr. Tim Hebron, Social Studies.
For the middle school, we have Clayton Paulson right here. He's our middle school helping PE. We also have Mr. James Watherty. He's our seventh grade math. And we have a fifth grade math, Mrs. Edwina Welch, and sixth grade math, Mrs. Libby Lawter, who couldn't join us tonight.
If you're in elementary, please stay. In the back row, we have Mrs. Divica Pitts. She's first grade. Next to her, we have Jessica Brooke, who is third grade, special ed. Halle Lofton, second grade. And all three of these ladies are ABOX school graduates, so it's nice to see them come back and invest in our community.
I think we had, I think I saw each one of them today. They were hard at it in classrooms, but seeing, I won't make this comment I made the other day, I'm pretty sure I've seen Mrs. Pitts every day this summer. Working in a classroom. Mrs. Lofton has been there a lot. So Mrs. Brooke at the ground running at the elementary about a week ago. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We could have to go.
Not even a week ago.
We feel very lucky and very blessed that we got to hire the teachers we got to hire. And like I told them, they chose us, and they're awfully blessed for that.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into our Principal Director Reports. Dr. Hall.
So today is obviously the first day of school. We had a couple of different assemblies, one for second, third, and fourth grade, and another for kindergarten, first grade. Set some expectations for the year, as well as gave the kids an opportunity to enjoy a video of the teachers who put together. They also got to enjoy some games, you know, kickoff the year. We did our first day of school kindergarten pictures, where each kid in kindergarten will get a free first day of school picture, because we know not every parent can make it in for that. We want them to be able to remember that. It was a great first day. We had kindergarten lunch, and everybody made it out, so that was good. We're excited for tomorrow.
Thank you. Middle school principal, Mrs. Allison.
We also had a great start with our students and teachers today. We did grade level assemblies for each class, and we set those expectations. We're also happy that this year we have more promos added, and so with the exception of sixth grade, who is one-on-one, all the other grade levels have at least three parts for grade levels.
Thank you. High school principal, Dr. Nash.
We had a back-to-school assembly today. That was great. We talked about the new changes in the student handbook. I'd like to give a shout-out to our student council members. They've done a lot of work this summer. They chalked our sidewalks for us. They created a video. Today, they did a presentation on our bear code that we have in the high school for expected behavior. So thank you to student council for doing that for us.
Thank you. Special Services Director, Mrs. Swafford.
First, I'd like to thank everybody that worked to get our new office up and ready. It was wonderful. They did a great job. I'm very, very happy. We've just been busy processing paperwork. We had new students moving in, some students moving out. I think we were 10 students move out, 11 students move in right now, but we're busy going through the paperwork and making sure that it meets our guidelines.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine.
My part in the great summer was fast and furious, both professional and all at the same time. Everybody stepped up, did a good job, and we were able to do it.
Thank you. We'll go on into our executive administration reports. We'll start with Dr. Nash or Dr. Dalton.
Summer school attendance hours were up 5,241 hours, which equates to about five students. What does that equate to? I mean, okay, what's five students mean? Five students means somewhere between $26,000 to $30,000 in additional revenue that we didn't receive last year. So we made up for the loss of revenue on our assessment evaluation. So that figures into our ADA. Enrollment, just give you some of the last three-year figures. 2017, pre-K through 12, we were 1,311 kids at this time of the year. 2018, pre-K through 12, we were 1,344 students. And in 2019, pre-K through 12, we're at 1,361. So we're up again. We like that. But it really doesn't settle down until after Labor Day, then we'll have a true picture of what we have. We did have a record enrollment. We had two days of enrollment, new enrollees coming in, but then we had, we had kids move. Like I said, middle September, we'll have a true, a true count. Just a reminder that MSBA Fall Conference, if you're not staying on Saturday night, you need to let PJ know before the 1st of September, because she needs to cancel the room. Or if you need to make any changes to your, to your room, for whatever reason, you need to let her know so she can get that done. Our preschool and special education building, our maintenance building, Mrs. Swafford talked about the special education building, where we swapped preschool in Mrs. Swafford's office. We've got preschool now, we have all of our preschools in line, and we have one really, really big playground. They, we had class in there today. That class has never been a licensed preschool, and we are making it a licensed preschool. We have a few more adjustments. Mr. Valentine's crew, Fire Marshal Kane, gave, told us some more things we want, we need to do, so we're going to get that done in the next couple of weeks, and then all three of our preschools will be licensed. And that, that's good. That helps parents get assistance with daycare, preschool, so that will help them as well. Our maintenance building, that's an ongoing project. It's kind of, when we have time to work on it, we work on it. The structure's done, the insight's pretty much done. James got really busy, and Terry got really busy finishing some other projects in the district, so that's kind of put on, they work on it when they can right now, but we'll get back on that. We'll probably have that done in a couple of weeks. Mrs. Swafford's office, like she said, I've been in her, I think she told me I've been in her office more in the last two weeks than I was in the last three years, because she's across the street. It's easy to get to her now. Instead of calling her, I just walk over to her. So anyway, really good start to the school year, Paige. You had your first day today. What'd you think?
It was really great. Lots to be proud of.
Good, good. We had lots of smiling faces. The only, I think, Dr. Hall, we had, last count I heard was seven or eight kindergartners crying, but other than that, we were in good shape. Pretty good ratio. Okay.
That's your all.
Follow-up, I talked to you about what we're going to do with our summer PD days. Tried something different this year. I think I told every teacher group, sometimes you have this lesson idea, you're not sure it can really go well, but you're nervous when you've never done it before. Feel like those, those workdays went pretty well. What we did was divide it up by content area and had those teams come in. Feedback is, well, it felt like those teachers got a lot done. They were able to sit down with those teams and review some things constructionally, and hopefully, I feel like they were prepared, ready to go, and had a vision of where they wanted to get to. So it felt like those were productive. We do have some preliminary assessment data in. It's not final. There's a review process, and you can reveal some things. Got some areas we feel really good about, and got some areas we're looking more closely at, and we'll be deepening all of it as we get started. I hope next month to be able to do the presentation on that. I had some data we were supposed to have August 8th. Got an email last night that it's going to be the 24th. Get nervous sometimes on what that's going to look like. If we have all of our information, we'll present that next month. A-plus updates, and we had some legislation come down, impact A-plus potentially. Not going to affect until August 28th as far as state law. Talked to the Department of Higher Education. They've got some conflicting language on some of that, but all of it's going to be beneficial to our students, the part that, the parts that they're clear on and what that looks like. Student just has to be in an A-plus school two years instead of three and qualified. Talking about something that really doesn't impact us here, but it does impact our students as they go on. Before, the student goes and they qualify for A-plus, they use the Pell Grant money first, and in A-plus after that, what this legislation is going to dictate is that A-plus money's going to be applied, and they can potentially get some of that Pell Grant money to benefit the extra. So we, that's a benefit to our kids potentially, like the secretary said. September 16th coming up, we're looking at those BD days. Last year, we teamed up with Mountain Grove, and went to Mountain Grove, and really had a BD day, and got a lot of positive feedback. So we started off going to host one, was just going to be us and Mountain Grove to start with. It has expanded, and thankfully had to shut it down. We're going to have our packed building full of teachers from neighboring districts. We've got Todd Whitaker coming in, which is a pretty well-known name in the field of education. Excited to be able to host that.
We're 435 last year, so we've got all of them. Obviously, our district, Mountain Grove, all their teachers tall, but the teachers from Skyline, Urbana, which is up 65, 35 from Royal Springs, and 30-something from Parkland. And we've invited Skyline, our small family there, for starting.
Looking forward to it.
It's a little new.
Thank you. We'll go into our discussion action items, and we'll start with the approval of the Annual Secondary Board Report.
Okay, so our Annual Secretary of the Board Report follows our audit, so we're just going to briefly talk about our audit. Audit went extremely well, as always, and it only goes extremely well because of the ladies that take care of our finances on the daily taxes. Between Mrs. Sterling and the Council Pay, Mrs. Ray, our bookkeeper, and Sean Cleveland-Hagan, our assistant bookkeeper, Katrina Matt, and you take care of food service, those ladies drive our audit goes. And our audit went extremely good. There are no findings on our audit, completely plain. That's the reason, because they do such a great job. Now, we have a great audit that we can call at any point and ask lots of questions. So we feel good about that. But that's, so we submit our ASBR after our final audit. So if you see ASBR, the Annual Secretary of the Board Report, and you did a great job putting this together, so I appreciate that. Our fund balance is still strong. It's right where the board is requesting it to be. It's right where the board is requesting it to be. It's a twenty-two point two-six. Now, it looks like it's down point two-four percent. It was twenty-two and a half last year. But I want you to look at our fund balance. Our fund balance is up four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars over last year. So, you figure a fund balance, cash you have in the bank versus expenditures. So, we did transfer some more money into Fund Four, because we have some fairly large capital projects we wanted to be ready for. But our, the money in the bank is more. Our fund balance looks like it's down point two-four percent. I'm not concerned about that at all. Motion to approve.
Anyone make the motion to approve the annual secretary of board report? Kenny makes a motion, I have a second. Dan seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries a seven-oh. Next is tuition, tuition, tuition. Special education compliance plan.
So, this is, go ahead and come on up. Plan that we're required to adopt each year. And I'll let you just give a brief description of what it is.
Okay. Every year, we are required by the state of Missouri to adopt a local compliance plan. We are to follow policies, procedures, regulations. Under the state of Missouri, we should follow your federal guidelines, because we provide special education services for students with disabilities. This was finalized July thirtieth. Just has some changes. Most of it revolved around some changes in wording, just some phrases. There are some new speech and language changes that are coming. Again, the state requires us to adopt a local plan. We have three options for that. Option A is to adopt the DESI model plan. Option B is the DESI plan with some local revisions. Or option C is to write our own plan. And I recommend to follow DESI's plan, which is option A.
Can I have a motion to approve the special education compliance plan as presented? Randy makes a motion of a second. Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries a seven-oh. Thank you. The tuition rate, not too much.
As you know, we have K-eight feeder districts. So, we have three districts that are K-eight districts, and they send their students to high school. Plus, we have, this year, we have one tuition paying student from a neighboring district. So, we have to set a tuition rate. It's calculated on district expenses from FY nineteen. The tuition rate for FY twenty is six thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-two cents, as compared to six thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and three cents. That goes up and down. Went down last year, it's going back up a little bit this year.
I need a motion to accept the tuition rate as presented. Dan makes a motion. Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries a seven-oh. Transportation rate for two thousand nineteen twenty.
So, we don't charge this, we never charge this transportation rate, because we don't haul kids outside of our district besides, we haul a group of kids out of Thornfield that are in the K-eight feeder. We don't charge this tuition rate. It has been set. It is there in case we decide that we're, so we have a kid, maybe they're not in Thornfield, they're in Gainesville, and we run by their house, and they want to come today, but we can charge, we can charge them this rate. We've not ever done that, to my knowledge. And that's twenty, I mean, I have twenty years worth of knowledge. But we've set it on an annual basis, just to keep it consistent. In case we ever choose to, then we have some background on how, what it's been.
Thousand ninety dollars in case. Need a motion to accept the transportation rate as presented. Kenny makes a motion of a second. Dan seconds. All in favor carries a seven-oh. The next is nursing contract.
So, we approved a nursing contract in June for a new student that we have. This is a backup contract for another, if, they're having some issues. Both nursing companies can provide people. If they have some, if there's a vacancy, this other one can pick up. So, we just need to approve another nursing contract. So, we have two people, two companies that we can draw from to provide a nurse, and this one's actually a little bit cheaper. So, it's actually gonna save the district money. And remember, we can build back Medicaid for a portion of this expense.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the nursing contract as presented. Michael makes a motion of a second. Randy seconds. All in favor carries seven-oh. Conflict of interest ordinance.
So, Missouri Ethics Commission, as you know, you have to fill out paperwork with them, but it requires that a portion of the policy BBFA, dealing with financial interest statements, be adopted every other year by September fifteenth, to have the option of filing the short version of the personal financial disclosure form. Otherwise, you would have to fill out a long version. Short version's much better. We are asking for approval of this revised version. You must provide a copy of the minute showing the adoption of the policy due to Missouri Ethics Commission, and Mrs. Sterling takes care of that.
So, I'll have a motion to accept the conflict of interest ordinance as presented. Michael makes a motion of a second. Randy seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries seven-oh. MSBA full maintenance group.
So, the board will need to approve to continue the policy service with MSBA. Every district in the state that I know of uses one of two policy services, either Music or MSBA. Just because I, to be honest with you, I can't keep up with all of the laws and all of the changes that need to be made. That's what attorneys do, because lots of laws are passed every year at the state and federal level, and our policies change. Those ones that are critical, we don't have an option. We have to follow state and federal laws. So, the rate is three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Actually, did not go up from last year.
Need approval of the MSBA full maintenance agreement. Randy makes a motion of a second. Mark, any discussion?
Is there a reason why we choose this one over the other? I'm just asking. If, or is it?
Well, you know, MSBA is run by school board members. So, those, those are the officers, they, they set the direction of MSBA. Music is run by an insurance company and an attorney.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor carries seven-oh. Purchase of the trip bus.
We put this in the budget, and we approved that budget in June. So, I did quite a bit of shopping for buses we need to replace, like I talked about, O24, which is our large trip bus. It has, right at two hundred and fifty thousand miles. And it actually has a broken front case on the motor. It still runs and operates fine, but it does leak a significant amount of oil. But I uploaded specifications for a two thousand seventeen Bluebird All-American Transit Bus. The bus has approximately forty-five thousand miles. That sounds like some miles, but there's still quite a little warranty left. And if you remember, we have O24, because it's only a trip bus, has a quarter million miles on it. So, I anticipate this lasting for a long period of time. Mr. Heath, our bus mechanic, and I drove to Little Rock, Arkansas a couple of weeks ago, I think, inspected the bus. James was pleased with the condition and the features of the bus. It does have air conditioning, tinted windows. It has under, undercarriage storage as well. It will be the only bus that we have air-conditioned. But we have budgeted ninety thousand dollars for this purchase. The purchase price is seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and I believe it'll meet our needs for a long time. We have an opportunity, though. So, as I started thinking about it, we could pay for it outright. Or we could finance a portion of it that would open up some capital dollars for us. So, I sent out the number, the interest, to all of our local banks here in town, to see if they, what interest rate they would give us. I did it on a two-year note, so that we would pay, originally, the cost was eighty thousand dollars. I talked it down a little bit. We paid thirty down, so we paid twenty-seven-five down, and we financed fifty. We would make a payment in September first of two thousand twenty of twenty-five thousand dollars plus the interest, and then a payment the following year, and then it would be paid off on that. So, our payment would be twenty-five thousand plus the interest on that, those dollars. Great Southern Bank, a branch out of Springfield, is the one that I've been dealing with, had the lowest rate of two point nine-nine percent. Town and country, I would tell you, was very close. Everybody bid, except Home Products chose not to bid, because of the board's position on board, and anybody think there would be a conflict? Because it is a local bank. Mrs. Stafford was not involved in the conversation at all. So, I just want you to know that. She's at the local branch. This was not, this was a general first. But they are the lowest at two point nine-nine. My recommendation would be to take that two point nine-nine percent and finance, because it's gonna open up some capital. We haven't budgeted, but it gives us some room on that capital account.
So, I want to make a motion to purchase the trip bus as presented, financing the Great Southern as presented by Dr. Dunn. Kenny makes a motion of a second. Dan seconds. Any discussion?
How much will this be out of the capital?
So... Hold on, let me think about it. Fifteen, fifteen hundred? Twenty-two fifty. There you go. For the whole term. Yeah, for the whole term. I was thinking about it here.
So, that brings it back to the eighty thousand?
Yeah. Brings it back to the original purchase price. Correct. So, my opinion. Yeah, yeah, I believe, I believe it is. Just, you know, we can, if we're in a situation next year, we can just pay the whole thing off if we want to, and not finance it for the second year. There's no prepayment penalty. Or we could get towards the end of the year and see what we're doing. We're flush in capital, and we can pay off the note. There's not a prepayment penalty. Does that help?
Any other discussion? All those in favor carries a seven-oh. Next is surplus property.
So, O24, the bus we are replacing, we're not gonna sell it yet. We're gonna sell it till the new one comes in. But we do need to declare that surplus property, so I can open it up for bids.
I have a motion to accept bus O24 as surplus, surplus property as it is. Mark makes a motion of a second. Randy seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor carries a seven-oh.
We've had several discussions about bus cameras, and it was included in the budget. And we received several quotes. The bus cameras were the best and lowest bid, coming from two-four-seven security. We actually bought one set, and they had it on one of our school buses, so we could make sure that's what we wanted. We felt like that was worth the investment. So, it actually would be a little cheaper than that fifty-five, because we already own one set of cameras. But this would be cameras for all contractors, main buses, and all district buses, and the cost of fifty-five to sixty thousand, depending on the installation cost. Spoken with the Ava Transportation Association president, Mr. Benson. They are agreeable to the cameras. They would like the following conditions. The district would assume the cost of all equipment and installation. They would like there not to be live viewing, so that means while they're driving down the road, being able to view that. We can't do that anyway. That's a significant cost. It's not bid that way. That would require us to have a cellular modem transmitting data. I don't have that. We're not gonna pay that monthly fee. I don't feel like we need that. They also requested that contractors can view the video footage from home, and the system contain a stop-on camera, and it does contain a stop-on camera. That was an addition that we added when Larry asked me about that. So, depending on the system, they have a new one out that has a, what they call a fisheye. The original one we bid was four cameras, but this fisheye takes the place of a couple of those inside and gives a better video footage. So, at no, there's no additional cost, because you're deleting a camera and putting a fisheye camera in there. I'm asking for a direction of the board. We can vote on it, we can table it, but the money has been budgeted. Just what you guys would like to do from here.
Well, since I've been the big proponent for cameras, okay, I still believe the cameras are very important, and we budgeted, thank you very much. I don't believe that the cameras need to be viewed unless there's an issue on the bus. A parent saying something, the kid's complaining, the bus driver's feeling there's an issue on the bus. Now, my understanding, if it was explained to me right, the cameras are hard drives. They're not an SD card, right?
Correct.
So, the hard drive would have to be pulled out of the camera, hooked to a computer here somewhere. I'm not a technical person, so please.
You're good so far.
Okay, and have to be hooked to a computer here to be viewed.
So, you can do it one of two ways, but yes, that's the easiest way to do it. So, you go to the bus, you pull the hard drive out, so it's about this big. You take it with cord, you plug it into the computer, my computer, whatever. You view, view the footage. If you need to save it, if a kid did something wrong and you need to save that footage, you save it, or if there's an incident on the bus. The other way is to take a laptop out there and plug into it, if you have a software package, to view it that way.
But is that, that's not part of this? So, really, the only, I mean, our way...
Well, I can take a laptop out there and plug into the bus.
You could, you could.
Yes.
Okay. But really, pulling the hard drive out would be the...
Yeah, that'd be the most efficient way.
So, I don't see us, or you, or anyone else, pulling the hard drive out for any reason at all, unless there was a complaint, correct?
Correct.
Is that correct?
The footage lasts three to four weeks, depending on the settings, and then it just writes over itself. You know, I'm not, no, I'm not going out to the buses. I mean, I have to get on their buses, and they'd know what is on their bus. They would know that.
Right. So, then, if you were going to view them at that point, then the bus drivers could view them too.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely.
So, now, my, my deal, I understand that they want to pull them off, be able to view them, but this is my concern with that. Number one, I don't think pulling a hard drive a lot is a good thing, okay? But also, you pull that hard drive off of there, you forget to put that hard drive back on the bus, and you're viewing it, and something happens on that bus the next day. We defeated the whole purpose of putting these cameras on the bus. This is just my opinion, okay? Because this is for everybody's safety, not just the kids. This is for the bus drivers. This is for everybody. The arm thing is for everybody. My greatest fear is someone's gonna blow an arm, and a kid's gonna get, excuse me, a student's gonna get hurt.
Did talk to Sheriff Gason about the stop-arm camera, and he said it would help them prosecute greatly. It's hard to prosecute. I mean, Tommy, you try to do some things, make some reports.
So, I mean, bus drivers are gonna know if someone blew a cam, blew through an arm. Certainly, the comments are made, we don't have time to take a photo of the driver's last one. But they know. So, then, you could pull that out, and you could look, and you could see if someone went through an arm, or anything like that. I, my personal opinion is, I don't think anyone needs to have access to these hard drives unless there's an issue on the bus. A parent complains, a student complains, a bus driver complains, whatever. I don't see you having a joy session and running out and pulling hard drives out just for the heck of it. If you have that much time, we really need to find a new job for you.
Not, not gonna happen.
So, that's my opinion on that.
How many cameras are gonna be on the bus?
So, the, the original quote we had was four. Three inside and a stop-arm camera, so back, middle, front. So, one pointing towards the front from the back, one pointing towards the back from the front, and then one in the middle, because of the high seats. But now they have a fisheye camera that's gonna reduce that, I believe, by one. So, there'll be two cameras inside and a stop-arm camera.
Camera in front and fisheye in the back.
So, the fisheye actually is towards the middle. So the fisheye actually is towards the middle and over the top of the seats.
And you can go out to the bus and just plug your computer into it and read it.
With a, with, my understanding is with a soft, with a software to read it, I could, if there was an issue, but the way we've done it is we brought the hard drive into my computer, plugged it in that way, because it was, it's just easier, cause the cords, you don't have to deal with cords and plug into it.
So, if they have a bus that goes bad and they borrow somebody else's buses, or they have a second bus, and there's no camera on that, we're not gonna worry about that.
Well, I, I mean, I can't afford, I don't think we can afford to buy one for every spare.
Just make it.
Yeah, correct, that is a correct statement, they, for that time period, for that day, usually, I don't know, you drive a spare for a day, Dwayne, maybe two at the most, you get them back on the road, spares aren't as good as your main bus, so you want them back on as quick as possible, um, you wouldn't have a camera for that day or two.
Better than what we got now?
Absolutely.
So, and, and we just talked about that, so anybody, or you have to have a software downloader on a computer, anybody?
We gotta have a key.
To?
To unlock the DVR, to, to the case, cause it's case, and then you have to, um, plug it into a computer with software.
I, I think also, I think it's a good idea, except I, I don't think there's any need for, uh, anybody to access these cameras or the footage on these cameras at home, I think they should, I think drivers should definitely be able to view the footage, if there's a complaint, in the presence of their administrator, that's what I feel like, from a school computer, I think they should be only viewed by school computers.
Agreed, I have a mark. So is there any way this can be erased in any fashion or form?
Not.
I don't know what it's.
Yeah, not unless you got the DVR out and erased it, if you pulled it out, well, if you pulled it out, yes, you could erase it, if you, I assume, just like any computer can erase.
Answer cost how much?
Around $55,000. With the one that we already purchased, I'd forgotten about that, we purchased that one last year.
What kind of warranty did we give it for?
Um, so the DVR is a 10-year warranty, and the cameras are three, I believe, but the DVR is a 10-year warranty, it's called a Zeus DVR, it's, um, military grade, ace.
Yeah, I know, as cheap as possible, but the district is taking all the charge, right? We're paying everything.
Yes, it would be a district.
The bus drivers are paying nothing, correct?
Correct.
Well, that's the minus, if there's.
The district, same thing as the radios, we, I mean, we have, we have a form that we use for the radios, when we put the radios on, I would assume we do the same thing with that. Cameras are tampered with, just like the cameras we have around the district.
Can, uh. Can you get us some more information on the other issue we talked about? The GPS.
Yeah.
And table this, till we see what the expense is gonna be with that.
I, well, I know what, I don't know, I don't know the monthly on the GPS, but the evidence. 63. For the first year, 2,600.
But this is our budget.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and approve, so I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the bus cameras at this, what you have already.
With a 247 security.
Yes, thank you, 247 security, and, um, that they're only viewed, if there's a complaint, that's the only time that the DVRs, they're not accessed by anybody.
Is that with, with an administrator?
Right.
Is that only by school computers?
Only on school computers.
I'd like to clarify one thing about that, uh, I think a bus driver, the way I understood it, she explained it, uh, if there's a complaint, if the bus driver wants to view it, I think that they should be able to come in the office.
Absolutely, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Absolutely, just in case they, I mean, even though no one's following.
Absolutely, if they wanna see something, we'll go get it, pull it.
Okay.
Mr. Dalton or I, um, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, I just think that it's, it protects students, and I think the drivers, if, it's only viewed school computer, school computer with administration present.
Yeah, I mean, if they wanna see something, they'll go down.
Get something.
Did you get that motion, Mrs. Sterling?
Got it. You have a motion on the table, I have a second, Randy, seconds, any, uh, any further discussion? Carrying that, all those in favor? Carries seven oh.
I would talk to the Transportation Association, get those forms to them, that would be the same as the radio forms, but they don't bear financial responsibility, we're very responsible.
Uh, next is, uh, MSBA policy update.
Yeah, so this is not for approval, it's just free to look at it in the next month, or look at it again, there's a couple other, um, policies, um, that are in that folder that aren't MSBA, they're, they're local policies, it's the sick leave payout that we approved in June, we, um, up the sick leave payout, but we just need to change the policy, so it's in writing, we just need to approve that, and, um, I'm trying to think, I thought there was one more. I don't know, it's uploaded, I mean, I can't remember when I uploaded it, so. It's in the folder.
That concludes our meeting agenda items, uh, next rule of the board meeting will be September 19th, uh, at 6:30 in this room. Have a motion to adjourn. Uh, Mike makes a motion, I have a second, Mark seconds, all in favor, carries a seven oh. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. What's another question?